Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Stephanie George. I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome, everyone. We do have four trustees present. We have Eric Fong. Welcome, Eric. This is your very first meeting as a trustee. Gina from North Kitsap, and we have Sue from South Kitsap, and myself from Bremerton Central Kitsap. We open all of our meetings with reading the mission statement for the library, and I get to do that tonight. And I want to start that with the mission statement of inspiring our community to dream more, learn more, do more, and be more. With that, Jill, would you like to do some welcoming introductions?
I would very much. I'm very, very pleased to have two very honored guests this evening. First of all, Erin Prince is with us, who is the superintendent of the Central Kitsap School District, and Doug Newell, who is her deputy superintendent. He has a longer title, but Doug, I'll just butcher it if I try to say it. But we welcome both of you, and as most of you know, we've had just an incredible partnership with Central Kitsap in building our new Silverdale Library, and we just look forward to developing that partnership even more in the coming year. We are planning to open our new building on the 26th of March, which is a Saturday, at 10 o'clock, and that will be the beginning of a new part of this partnership to really move forward, to ignite that community campus that they've started. So we are very happy to have you with us tonight, and thank you for being here, both of you.
Thank you, Jill. It's a great honor, and honestly, it's an honor for both Doug and for myself to be with you, one of our greatest partners, and it truly is a unique and special partnership. This is my third year in Central Kitsap as superintendent, and I have yet in my 36-year career in education have witnessed and experienced such a powerful and meaningful partnership. And so we really are looking forward to all that we can dream and hope and be together on the campus with the new opening of the library. So it's wonderful, and we're excited for everything that is to come. And Doug, you are a part of the brainchild of this, so I don't know what you want to say.
No, it's just, so I was up there this afternoon, I'll say a little bit, I was up there this afternoon because the sun was shining, and I actually caught Jill Jean on a weak moment. When the sun is shining, and when you're on our campus, and you see the kids, and you see things going on, and it's coming together, it's going to be an amazing spring up there. And I saw Ashley just poked in. I'm kind of jealous that she gets to go live there and welcome the community onto our campus.
We get up there as often as possible. I know Doug took me and took Jeannie Becken, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, was that two days ago, Doug? And just every time we're up there, there's something new to see, and something new to talk about and dream about, and what if, and oh, this could be, and it's going to be a very exciting journey, I know. Tonight, we have the privilege of sharing an update around Central Kitsap School District, and Doug has a PowerPoint that he'll be sharing. We'll be talking about the most important thing, and these beautiful, special faces and excitement here with our students. And Doug will talk a little bit about the levy and give a bit of an update there as well. So let's start out with, you know, a big thank you, and that's on the next slide. I think that there's many thank yous to be had. We're grateful, grateful for our students, most importantly, and their excitement, and their energy, and their joy. We're thankful for our staff, and the staff that shows up every single day with open arms and willingness to lean in to meet the needs of our students. We are so thankful and grateful for our community, our parents, our families, our partners, who have been on this wild ride with us over the last two years in a pandemic. I always joke with the school board, I said, you know, you hired me almost three years ago, and it wasn't part of the deal to be a superintendent in a pandemic. And we have a laugh about it, but it is serious business, and I couldn't ask to be in a better place. And it is the right time and the right place for me to be in Central Kitsap and to help be a part of this journey in the pandemic with making sure our students are safe and that they are getting the learning that they need at this time. So our commitment this year and this fall was to get back in full-time in person, and we have done just that. Last spring, we spent an enormous amount of time developing and working on a recovery plan, and this is where we're trying to focus, helping our students as they are in full-time in person, find out what needs they have, what strengths they have, how can we enable them to grow and to feel the support they need. We understand that social and emotional needs are higher than they've ever been before. We also understand that there are academic needs that our students have, where there may be gaps that we're recognizing, that we need to provide interventions. And that's what our recovery plan is for, and just really wrapping around the services and the supports that they need during this time, and also understanding that this will be a long journey. This is just not a, okay, this is two months, we got them caught up. The message that I'm giving our staff is this is not a situation where our students are behind. This is not a situation where we have to catch up because we have a new normal. We have an ability now to transform and rethink and re-ground. Where are we, and where do we need to head as we start to round out of a pandemic and start the recovery plan to get better and stronger? Couple of facts that are, I always enjoy sharing this for our communities especially. We have 19 schools in Central Kitsap, 11,300 students. We're really happy because with the loss of enrollment due to the pandemic, we have gone beyond what we projected in enrollment for this year. So that for us is a big goal and a big achievement, that we're recouping back our students. We have 1,500 employees who work with us, 250-plus daily bus routes. So I want you to think about, think about that. All of the yellow buses, we think, and we see them on the roads, and we wave at them, and really enjoy that we can provide buses for our students. 250-plus routes every day, serving 8,500 students. So when I have to call snow day, or we have to call ICE for certain areas of our district, which we did the last three days right after winter break, as you all know, we're thinking about 250-plus bus routes, and can we transport all our students safely? And we actually have employees that are running, driving the roads and checking those routes out. We have free meals for all students this year. This is extended from last year, so we are serving breakfast and lunch to students. We have one-to-one Chromebooks at every grade level, and our older students take Chromebooks home. Our elementary students have Chromebooks in class. And in the case that we go remote, or when we were in remote last year, every student had a Chromebook at home, and Doug and his team worked really hard around connectivity and making sure that we had hotspots available to all families that we were working with, the different internet suppliers to provide services to all our families. We have 4,300 students that participate in a club, or an activity, or a sport, and we know from research that if a student is active and participating in extracurricular, they are far more successful getting through school and being more engaged. And I know many of you know that with the library services that you provide and the activities you provide for students, a safe place, a learning space, an enrichment space for students after school or before school. And 2,767 students right now are enrolled in art or music class. So those are just some fun facts. Doug, you want to update them a little bit on experiencing this? This is a big, big thank you.
Yeah, so for those of you that live in Central Kitsap or have your kids come through our schools, we want to thank everybody that's part of our community. It's hard to imagine it was six years ago that we voted on this, but the pandemic has kind of elongated our windows. We completed rebuilding our high schools about two years ago, and we finished up the program. But just want to make, thank everyone. The spaces that we have across our district are just tremendous for learning at this standpoint, and we keep going. This summer, we're going to start on a replacement for Fairview Middle School, and that's being funded not by the local community, but by the federal government, and we're excited to get that one going. But for those of you that haven't been on our Central Kitsap campus, again, just thank you for voting for it. We've invested now, the school district, about $195 million into that campus, and it is truly an urban park, 60 acres. And I'm a little worried, Ashley, that everybody's going to remember that the coolest thing on the campus is the library. So I'm going to be fighting you for the top billing, but looking forward to having you guys up there and bringing the rest of our community onto our campus. That being said, we got some pictures, because we've been sneaking around in there quite a bit. As we've talked quite a bit today, it's so exciting. I can't tell you how many people, when I take them on tours, I did it today, a couple of dads, and I pull back the Vis Queen, and they see the new treehouse. They're like, we're going to be here every week with our kids. And there's a playground outside, and there's a field, you know, it's, this is a game changer for us. So thank you, Jill, for allowing me to give you a tour of our campus, because this is going to make both of us stronger, certainly going to make the school districts stronger to have you guys there helping our kids, because they're your kids, too. So first tonight, and this is made in-house, but we have a new video, and I'm going to try sharing this, and hopefully, I might have to, I might not have done this right. I'm going to stop share for a second and optimize my share. Because we have not used this before.
You are the very first audience. I think Doug and I have seen it, and no one else has. So hopefully, we've got it ready to play here.
Let's go.
What do you remember most about school? Chances are, it's more than academics. It's the memories you made while you were learning. The same is true for our students. When we think about the ways we keep them engaged and excited about learning, those are the things our levy supports. This includes arts, athletics, and clubs, counselors, and libraries, as well as safety and security and technology. The levy also helps fund things you might not expect, like small class sizes, special education, and transportation. Levy dollars help us provide students with a quality, well-rounded education that goes beyond a state-funded basic education. The levy measure on February's ballot will replace the current levy, which expires soon. If the levy is renewed, the tax rate will remain at the current rate of $1.50. This is not a new tax. We've had a levy in place for more than 20 years, and we do not take that for granted. Find more information about the school support levy renewal on our website at CKschools.org. And please, remember to vote by February 8.
So thank you for that. As I said, that was done in-house. We've got some pretty creative folks. Pretty cool to watch the kids. It's always heartwarming to see that. Just kind of a little bit different than how libraries are funded. We get 80% of our money from the state of Washington, primarily based on an enrollment basis. We get another 10% in special funding from the federal government in the form of Title I supports for our neediest kids, and also for payment for the fact that we have the big Navy bases. But the remaining 10% is our local funds, and that really pays for those things that's outside of basic education. Everything you saw listed before, but it's really what allows us to have a unique learning environment for all of our kids. It is a local property tax, similar to how you guys are raising money, and it's the bridge the gap. All of the things that we talked about, or that were shared in the video, we really can't do these. We can't do athletics and arts after school without them. We have very limited counselor resources. Believe it or not, we're only funded for two security people to cover our 19 campuses, and unfortunately, security is something that we all have to be concerned about on our schools, and it goes on and on. But it helps make CK strong. It's something we've been doing for a long time. And as we shared in the video, we're just asking for the tax rate to stay the same. For those of you that you may not know, we actually have the authority to go up to $2.50 per thousand. We are the only school district in the county that has not maxed out or is planning to max out the tax collection. We've been trying to stay level and try to do everything we're doing and be reasonable with our taxpayers, so that we're not, we respect their commitment to our schools. And thank you. So I'm going to stop share and answer any questions.
Yeah, just checking to see if you might have any questions around bonds, or levies, or school, or anything that's happening. You know, it's such a boring year for us.
It's such a great opportunity to see these presentations, because I think, you know, I see them, and you see those fun facts, and then you're just stunned by things like 19 schools and 250 bus routes. I will not think about snow the same again after that. And all of those different things. It's always good. I want to thank you both definitely for coming out and just helping to keep the community updated, right? Just keep us in touch with what's going on. Any other questions? Comments?
Hi, this is Eric. I had a question. Thank you so much for the presentation. It was wonderful to see how dollars are being used. I may have missed this, so I apologize. In that last slide, when it mentions that levy dollars help to fund libraries, is there anything specific about the libraries? Is it infrastructure? What is it specifically for libraries that's funded?
Primarily, we're using it for staffing. Notionally, how we get funded from the state of Washington, we get a half of FTE for an elementary school library, and we put, each elementary school has a full-time librarian. And so it's primarily around staffing, Eric, to allow us to provide more resources and assistance in our libraries.
Great to know. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Erin and Doug? Oh, Gina, go off mute.
No, I just wanted to say thank you. It was a very informative presentation. Thank you.
You're welcome. I know where I'm going to be on March 26, so I'm looking forward to seeing you all there. I'm sure most of you will be there with us. It's going to be, the sun will be shining, Jill. It will be a great day.
It will, definitely, Doug.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Tammy, are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
We have none.
Thank you. So we're to the part of public comment. The board welcomes public comment. This is a time we leave open, allowing people to make the public comment on either issues that are not on the agenda and not personnel issues. We do have public comment from three individuals, which Tammy's going to read here in a moment. We're taking a couple of them, because while they might be construed as being related to personnel issues, we're taking them because they're really in response to some communication that we put out in the community. And in both cases, they have also identified some additional points that we think are important to hear. So with that, Tammy, would you like to start with the first?
Yes. First letter received from Deborah Montez to the Board of Trustees. I wanted to highlight this recent opinion letter published in the Kitsap Sun titled "Library Board Member Shouldn't Vote on Budget," published on December 7, 2021. Kitsap Regional Library Board of Trustees member Bobby Driscoll should be recusing himself from matters relating to staff and/or management pay, given that his wife, Carrie Driscoll, is one of the top staff members at Kitsap Regional Library Foundation. Mr. Driscoll is voting on a budget that directly relates to the pay and benefits his wife receives and his family therefore benefits from. As a taxpayer who voted for the most recent library levy, it is disappointing to me that I have to point this conflict of interest out to our county commissioners, library director Jill Jean, and the rest of the KARL Board of Trustees. I ask that all three of these parties pay better attention to who is appointed, why they are appointed, and whether their appointment is in direct conflict with the prudent and judicious use of my tax dollars. Polly A. Longworth, Bainbridge, Ireland. I also wanted to point out, this is what was included in Deb's letter. I also wanted to point out this policy in the Kitsap Regional Library Policies Handbook, trustee conflict of interest policy. No Kitsap Regional Library trustee may use his or her position as a trustee to obtain financial or other gain for the private benefit of the trustee, or for the trustee's immediate family, or for an organization with which the trustee is associated. I am reading the Board of Trustees meeting minutes for January 26, 2021. It appears Bobby Driscoll was sworn in as a member of the board in January, and it has turned for family and personal reasons in December 2021. When did the board become aware of Bobby Driscoll's conflict of interest? When the Board of Trustees learned of the conflict of interest, what was the board's response? Additionally, were the Kitsap County Commissioners, who oversee appointing positions on the board, aware of the conflict of interest policy? And that Bobby Driscoll had a potential conflict of interest when they appointed him to the Board of, up to the library? Being that Jill Jean writes in this month's report to the board that she continues to regret the loss of Bobby Driscoll as one of our Bremerton/Kitsap, Central Kitsap trustees, quote unquote. I think it's important that the board address this issue directly. The board should be transparent about their process of addressing conflicts of interest as described in the policy, so that the public can trust that the board is opening, operating, excuse me, transparently and with integrity to avoid another unfortunate oversight like this in the future. Respectfully submitted by Deborah Montez. The next is a letter received from Garrett Knobs to the trustees. First, I want to thank you for acknowledging public comment in your December meeting. As we go into our third year of this global pandemic, and our third year of these meetings being hosted via Zoom, with public comment accepted only via written communication, I believe it is vital to ensure that patron and taxpayer voices continue to be included in the planning and vision of our local library. I was concerned, however, at the president's explanation that the board had not publicly read and acknowledged prior public comment due to it concerning ongoing contract bargaining, and that the board wanted to avoid speaking on those still to be resolved negotiations. This was frankly an unsatisfactory response, which failed to see the facts within the larger context of our current situation. Under normal circumstances, an individual could attend and deliver their public comment extemporaneously without pre-screening. If public comment can only be delivered via writing, it should still be treated in every other respect as public comment normally would, i.e., we as public expect our comment to be received as public comment and written to the record as it would be put into the record as public comment if we had attended in person and spoken it extemporaneously to the board. Parentheses, this being how these things happen under normal circumstances, and parentheses. I would expect the board to be under no compulsion to respond to public comment if there reason, i.e., refraining from comment on an ongoing bargaining process is entirely understandable and legitimate. That remains true whether meetings were held in person or via Zoom, and remains true whether public comment is spoken in person or delivered necessarily in writing. The most important consideration, which was overlooked in the board's response, is that it is key that public comment continue to be acknowledged as such and not selected against, regardless of any current realities which restrict its manner of delivery. After December meeting, I had intended to write my letter as above and leave it at that. However, I was surprised and disheartened on January 10, when I received an official letter from the board by email acknowledging, quote, "that a detailed response has been delayed. The Board of Trustees has purposefully chosen to limit our response out of respect for the ongoing act of bargaining process," dot, 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 end quote. It was also imperative for us to do our due diligence to assure a clear, transparent, and most importantly, factual response. You continue in the email, emphasis mine, and concluded your introduction. We are choosing to provide a more detailed response, given the level of misinformation being communicated, end quote, emphasis again, mine. I say that I was surprised to receive this letter as the board had made it so clear that you chose to not recognize dozens of letters of public comment as such under the reasoning of, quote, "respect for the ongoing act of bargaining process," end quote, when all that was necessary had been to acknowledge public comment as such and read it into the record. The board could have still declined to respond directly for the aforementioned reason, yet having stated that your prior handling of public comment had been with the intent of avoiding comment on the ongoing bargaining process. Within a matter of weeks, you not only decided to change that tack, but went so far as to publish an official letter via email and the karral.org website, which levied the loaded term, quote unquote, "misinformation" toward the other negotiating party, and suggested that they may have spread mendacities among our community. All this, when all that I wanted, and I suspect most of us wanted, was only to have our public comments read as such, to ensure that we, as patrons and taxpayers, were heard on the record. We did not require nor ask the board to wade into slinging mud on the other party to the ongoing bargaining process. The board members seem to have forgotten in its earnestness to justify its position to the public and the other party represents, that the other party represents frontline staff, who are the public face and core of the library for us as patrons. I could point out a number of questionable representations of fact in the January 10 letter, including an assertion that the pandemic might jeopardize library funding when the library's funding is unquestionably among the most stable, given that over 90% of it, if I understand correctly, comes from property taxes. But the real core of my frustration with interacting with the board over the past several months as a patron and taxpayer is this. First, you continually suppress public comment, then you rationalized it by suggesting that you were merely avoiding commenting on an ongoing bargaining process, suggesting that this was an appropriate reason for miscategorizing it and withholding its content from the minutes. Then you've reached that supposed line of reasoning to wade directly into the foray in an unofficial, in an official document, while casting aspersions upon the other party. None of this was necessary. The board could have read public comment as such, recognized it as such, and declined the comment on it while negotiations were still underway. We as patrons and taxpayers would have at least felt that our voices and our presence were included. Though you have assured us that you read all the letters sent, that is really beside the point. The letters were sent as public comment. If they are not read as such and recorded into the minutes as such, they are not public comment, spoken before the board, and heard by others in attendance. This is all that I myself at least had ever expected of you. I certainly did not expect for my local library board to be suggesting that its bargaining staff have been spreading misinformation. I would ask that you do better and conduct your business more thoughtfully in the future. I appreciate the fact that you are all unpaid volunteers in service to your local community, and I thank you for that. However, it's not service to be taken up lightly, and the work is consequential. And we as patrons and taxpayers expect to not feel shut out of the dialogue surrounding the vision and business of the library that we fund and utilize. Thank you, Garrett Knobs. And our last one is from Olivia Muzzi to the Board of Trustees. In your letter sent via email to members of the In your letter sent via email to members of the public and posted on karel.org, the board states that, quote, "We are choosing to provide a more detailed response, given the level of misinformation being communicated," end quote, and that, quote, "It was also imperative for us to do our due diligence to assure a clear, transparent, and most importantly factual response," end quote. From what I've seen, the information shared by the other party clearly cites their sources for wage data from the Secretary of State, Washington State Library Statistics, or sources their information directly from other library agencies through the form of public records requests. As you know, misinformation is a critically serious issue in our society today, so for the purposes of transparency and information integrity, it's important that as a public entity, you specifically describe, um, what information you are classifying as misinformation, the criteria used for classifying the information that was shared as, quote unquote, misinformation. Additionally, I wanted to share this information regarding increased housing and cost of living expenses, which has an impact on the Kitsap County community at large. There is a link to a document, 10% increase for Kitsap military base housing in 2022, sources the Department of Defense Travel Management Office. For specific figure demonstrating this increase, compare rank E6 with dependence and ZIP code 98310 from year 2021, parentheses, $2,130, in parentheses, with year 2022, parentheses, $2,334, in parentheses. There is another link, 5.9% cost of living adjustment increase for Social Security in 2022, sources Social Security Administration. Another link, 7% increase in the Consumer Price Index for 2021, and another link, 5.5% after stripping out volatile prices such as food and fuel, sources U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, the New York Times. All of the sources I've linked above are credible sources, and action that the Board of Trustees could take if concerned about the spread of misinformation surrounding library business is to record and post video slash audio of the public board meetings to the Kitsap, to KARL, the karel.org website so that the public can engage with the Board of Trustees' meetings even if they aren't able to attend during the scheduled meeting time. Recording and posting meetings is a standard practice for other county municipal agencies such as Kitsap Public Health District, City of Bainbridge Island, and the Bremerton City Council, among others. Prior to the pandemic, the Board of Trustees' meetings were held in person only at different sites throughout the system at 5:30 PM on a Tuesday. This meeting format made it difficult for many people to attend regular board meetings and effectively cut the public out of being able to listen or engage with the business of the Board of Trustees. Now during the pandemic, these meetings are held virtually via Zoom. To increase access, these Zoom meetings could be recorded and shared on the karel.org website so that members of the public can easily access and engage with the topics that the board is discussing, even if they aren't able to be present during the scheduled meeting time. Currently, one has to call in or attend the meetings synchronously, sorry, via Zoom, as these meetings are not recorded or shared. Another step the board could take to increase accessibility is enable live transcripts on the Zoom meeting, parentheses, as the, it looks like a link, letter moved to correspondence describes, uh, which was submitted by Doug Hayman. As part of the 2022 strategic plan, it is stated that, quote, "Our spaces, physical and digital, are inclusive and reflect our community, creating welcoming, open, and accessible experience for all," end quote. I am assuming this would apply to the Board of Trustees' meetings as well. Ultimately, the format of the Board of Trustees' meetings is an access issue. I encourage the Board of Trustees to consider increasing access and thus transparency around library business by recording and posting videos in any public meetings and enabling live transcripts to ensure that digital space of these public meetings is as need open to all. Olivia Muzzi, MLIS. And that is the end of the public comment.
Stephanie, you're muted.
Yeah.
And I will say it again, thank you, Sue. I wanted to thank Tammy for reading through those, um, on our behalf and on behalf of those who submitted, and to thank Ms. Montez, Ms. Muzzi, and Mr. Knobs for providing that public comment. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the consent agenda and based on the regular agenda by request. Included in this agenda are the minutes from our December 10th special meeting of the Board of Trustees. Additionally, our minutes of the December 14th regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, the payment, uh, vouchers for November and December for regular routine bills as well as for payroll and benefits, as well as the regular list of surplus library materials from the, that are being withdrawn from the collection as of December 2021. With that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed. Second?
Second.
Oh, it was a race, but I saw Jane first, so I second it. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Well, next on the agenda, we, uh, if following along on, in the agenda, we had moved that one aspect of new business to the top, but because we had introduced Doug and Erin, we have already kind of taken that. So we are going to return now to presentations and reports and briefings at this time, and we'll return to other items of new business farther down the agenda. So with that, I'll take any reports from my colleagues on the board about their activities in the last month or so.
Stephanie, I'll just say that, um, I went to wish Tommy Whalen well. Unfortunately, her, she wrapped up, uh, her retirement during the winter storm, and so I didn't know if I missed out on anything, but, um, I did go get to visit her and bring her retirement gift and send her my best regards. So it was nice to connect with her, and sorry her retirement ended in a snowstorm, so awful timing. That's all I have, thank you.
What a lovely generous gesture though, Gina. Thanks for taking that extra step. Anybody else?
I, I don't have anything to report. And then I can't remember. It's been busy, but not, I, not with library stuff.
I know, I had to go back through, I had to go back through notes and remembered that we actually had gone on a tour, so some of you were, you know, we were all at Silverdale Campus in December, and, um, and then I've had, I do want to make one note, I've had the pleasure of our, our new leader, Jason Driver, is literally en route as we, uh, well, hopefully, not now, maybe they're resting, but they're on their way, driving here from Chicago, and will arrive in our community on Thursday, so we're all looking forward to that. Eric, do you want to, do you want to give a report?
Sure, I completed my orientation as a new board member over the last couple of weeks. It was great to, uh, see everybody and, and get a lot of information from the different departments, uh, also this year. I'm the president of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, so looking forward to wearing multiple hats throughout the year. Grateful to be here, thank you.
You're gonna be busy. Good, great. Okay, next is, um, a finance committee report. Sue, would you like to provide that?
Sure, thanks, Stephanie. Um, so we had our finance committee meeting, um, we talked a little bit about Silverdale projects, uh, or properties, I mean. Um, later on this evening, we will be going into executive session to talk about the Bucklin Hill, um, property. Um, we also talked about the Silverdale Branch Project, and as Jill had mentioned earlier, the opening date is scheduled for Saturday, March 26th. Um, we talked a little bit, um, about, um, some, um, budget issues and stuff, and then an MOU. There, there will be an updated MOU with Central Kitsap School District, um, that will be, will put together, um, and it'll more or less focus on operational aspects, so that will be happening. Um, then we talked about the Manchester, um, property or project down there, um, and that's going along, um, fine, um, we, um, let's see, what else? Um, and then we talked just briefly about the capital budget, but that's also on the agenda for tonight, so I'll let Dan talk more about that later. Um, let me know if I missed anything, but those were kind of the highlights of the meeting that we talked about.
Yeah, good. Jill, would you like to give the library director, library director's report, your very last one?
Yeah, this is my very last meeting ever, I might say, be able to say, so it's pretty exciting, but, um, you know, it has been a busy month. Um, there's lots to tie up, um, in terms of several projects I've been involved with, but the report pretty much stands as I've written it. I did want to mention specifically to the board, though, that our board bylaws actually call for committees of the board to be established in March, which seems a little unusual to me. There must have been a reason that that was put into place at some time, but I would suggest that the board look at that again and have the committees established in January, um, as our executive group is, um, is already in place. And so what I outlined in my report was that the finance committee, I'm, I'm making the suggestion based on a discussion with Stephanie, that the finance committee be made up of Stephanie and Sue, and then strategic and long-range planning would be Gina and Eric, and then Sue would also help us with policy, um, in an ad hoc kind of basis. But I think this is, um, a plan that you can use for several months until March, and then you might want to relook at the bylaws. But thank you. Any questions?
No questions. I, I think it will be a great opportunity, given that we have a couple of new trustees, and we're all relatively new at some level, that, um, a session in the future to actually just go through the bylaws in detail and look at, um, um, because I'm sure there's other areas of opportunity for updating those, so we'll take that up certainly in the next couple of months. I'm sorry, Dan, I skipped you in racing to get to Jill. Would you like to give the, the finance report?
That's quite right. Good evening, everyone. Um, so you have two financial reports. The November report is being presented this month because, uh, the December board meeting happened too early in the month for us to finalize the, the numbers, so, uh, I'm not really going to focus on that too much. I will speak a little bit to the year-end 2021 financial report. We finished the year strong, um, as my cover letter shows that we had savings accumulated in salaries and benefits, and, um, not too surprisingly, that was larger than in other years, but that's pretty much due to the pandemic and the fact that we're not operating at full service levels yet, and so we have savings, and due to vacancies and that. We had a lot of savings in capital, but a lot of that is, a majority of that, I would say, almost half of that is due to the FFNE, um, delay for the new Silverdale Library, and that's not opening until March, so there was no need to expend that money, nor was there any place to store the furniture if we bought it early. Uh, and then we had a little bit of savings in the other account. Uh, I'm going to speak more about these savings and how they play into capital funds later on in the agenda, but does anyone have any questions on anything in the financial report? Um, be glad to entertain any questions on that.
No question. I have to say, Dan, you give one of the best, um, for volunteers' finance reports because the notes are always really clear and tied to the line items, so I always really appreciate that it's a clear presentation of what's going on, and so thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, we will hear some administrative reports from the staff, and I'm going to take them in order and try not to skip anybody this time. So, um, is, did Jamie pop in? Is she here to be able to do the Strategy and Communications Board report? You're on mute, Jill.
I'm not seeing her.
Okay.
I think as I reported earlier, there was a medical issue that she was dealing with this afternoon.
She's not popping in. How about the Public Services Board report?
Hey, everyone, good evening. I just, I would love to share one new item of business, and that is that our downtown Bremerton Adult Services Librarian Priya Chari is being honored this week at Leadership Kitsap's 20 Under 40 Award. I'm so excited. Priya's, Priya's done incredible work in community engagement. Of course, she started and has been running our anti-racist learning circle. Um, and, you know, one thing that Priya shared with me that I'd love to share with all of you is, um, she's interested in just getting out of the building, seeing how people are doing, and how we can better serve them, and that shows in her work. Um, I'm so excited that she'll be honored in this way. And the ceremony is Thursday at 6:15, and happily, it will be aired on BeCAT, um, so hopefully you can all join from wherever you are, um, if you have the time and inclination, and celebrate with us.
Good, thank you. Any questions for Shannon, given her submitted written report? Thank you, Shannon. Hopefully I'll see you, I'll be there on Thursday. Collection and Technology Services Report, Wong.
Good evening, everybody. Um, excuse me. I think I really just wanted to highlight the tremendous work that the IT team has done, um, over the past few weeks, a month, um, in terms of getting us moved over to a new phone system. Um, I think I mentioned at a previous board report that I've spoken with Liz that for the remainder of her professional career, she will never have a phone system project as, as complicated as difficult as this. And, um, so certainly with a project of this scale, um, there's things to tidy up at the end, things that were missed. Um, you know, I think one of the recent ones that came up is that, uh, the checkout receipts all had a phone number underneath it that, that needed to get updated, you know, things like that. Um, obviously, there's larger significant things as well in terms of the system phone numbers and making sure that they're working properly. But all in all, um, I don't think this project could have gone as well as it has. Um, and I'm just really happy for our organization, I'm happy for Liz and the team, um, because I do believe that the, the structure that's been put in with this new phone system, uh, will serve this organization well for many, many years in terms of accommodating growth in, in a logical, orderly fashion, um, as opposed to sort of just kind of being added on as, as it needed and just, just becoming a kind of a, a really unmanageable entity, I think. So, um, with that said, that's my report and highlight, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Don't realize how important the phones are until they don't work. How about facilities?
Well, good evening, everyone. Uh, let's see, I wanted to highlight a couple of things off of my written report. Uh, the first is that, starting yesterday, we kicked off our, the first phase of our large capital project here at Sylvan Way, um, and that first phase will include, um, the replacement of all of our parking lot lights with new LED fixtures out in the parking lot, so we will go from darkness out there to a bright, um, new safe parking lot. And contrary to what my report says, at the same time this week, they will, uh, in fact, be replacing all of the exterior lights around Sylvan Way. So both of those will be getting done all this week, uh, instead of pushing one later. They got all the supplies in, so it's all being done at once. And, uh, as soon as they've completed the work at Sylvan, they're going to go and do the same thing at Paul's Bow Branch, so all the parking lot lights and then the exterior lights will be replaced with energy-efficient LED. So that's a, a very positive move forward, uh, for our facilities. And then the other thing I just wanted to, to point out was that, um, our team has recently acquired a, a nice new snowplow for the front of our, our pickup truck. So a lot of what we've experienced in the past with very, very expensive, uh, snow clearing contracts and, um, what we experienced with, you know, compact snow and ice in our parks... and what we experienced with, you know, compact snow and ice in our parking lots at the end of last year will hopefully be a thing of the past because now we're just going to be able to take care of it ourselves and move that away, hopefully prevent that hard-packed ice buildup in our parking lots by clearing the snow before it gets that way. So that concludes my comments unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Nothing like a good crisis to inspire new ads to the equipment. Thank you, Mike. Um, I don't see Wendy in the mix. I didn't look for her, so I'm assuming she's not there. How about Lucretia?
Hello, everyone. Happy January, happy 2022. Um, I, my report stands as is. I did want to add that, um, I wanted to take advantage of the opportunity to share the early version of the diversity equity action plan with our incoming library director to get his thoughts, obviously. I think that's important. And that will still include conversations with the staff to engage them around what's being captured. In the meantime, the equity team has been providing their thoughts and input on what should be considered as part of the plan. It's a, it's a living, breathing document, and so it's always going to kind of adapt according to our needs. And while they're doing that, they're also working on providing training suggestions for staff as we move forward advancing DEI in the organization. Um, I look forward to also engaging with staff around, you know, interest in employee resource groups. How might that benefit us as an organization? What should those groups be? Also, did someone say something? Or is my voice just echoing? Um, also engaging the staff around, you know, how do we acknowledge and appreciate the cultural recognition months, right? So instead of rubber stamping, um, like a template way of acknowledging, let's say, Black History Month or Native American History Month, how do we appropriately and meaningfully, thank you, Shannon, for this language, meaningfully engage staff? And so, um, I want to have those conversations going forward. I'm saying that to the board as well. You know, I welcome your thoughts. I welcome you emailing me, letting me know, hey, have you considered this? Um, because we want it to be an inclusive process. But I think it is important to also ensure that the staff is engaged in those, um, some of those decisions and impart some of that planning so that they too are invested in the work that we're doing. So unless there's any questions, that is it for me today.
Nice. Any questions from Lucretia? What is she saying? Hey, Tammy, can you just verify? I did a quick look, but I didn't see Wendy. Okay. All right, great. Um, next on the agenda is correspondence. We actually did receive eight items of correspondence that we have identified. One related to subject matter of live transcripts, one related to the Open Public Meetings Act, and six that were in response to the communication that the board previously referenced in the meeting. Uh, we have no old business, which brings us to new business. And the first item under that new business is the COVID-19 vaccination testing and face covering policy. Kristen Worcester is going to walk us through that. Hang on. There we go. Can you hear me now? Okay.
Hi, everyone. So our COVID-19 vaccination testing and face covering policy, it came about due to the occupational, the OSHA emergency temporary standard, which was a federal mandate. And it has gone back and forth with the courts. But regardless of whether the federal government requires or not, we're recommending that we continue along the path with this policy. It ensures a safer workforce, asking all, encouraging all employees to become vaccinated or test weekly if they're unable to be or not interested in becoming vaccinated. So, um, that policy is there for your review, and we're asking for approval from the board for it.
Anybody have any questions that you would like to ask at this point in time from the trustees?
I just had one quick question. I was looking at the policy and, um, let's see, purpose scope. So I would say it's the third major paragraph down that starts with employees may request an exception from vaccination requirements. I just wanted to clarify because the rest of the policy made the, made it sound like the vaccination was encouraged. And so the word requirement just kind of, I didn't know if that needed to be clarified a little more or, um, if you could elaborate on that.
Well, we are encouraging all employees to be vaccinated due to religious or medical accommodations. They don't have to be. They can submit to weekly testing in order to come into the branches. So I guess we could update that language. We can certainly take a look at that.
I guess, I just want to be clear, it's not a requirement, correct?
No, it's not a requirement that you're vaccinated, but it is a requirement if you are unvaccinated that you test weekly prior to coming into the buildings.
Okay.
So I guess there is a requirement in there. Uh, choose your own adventure, though, whether you're either vaccinated or going to test weekly.
Okay.
So then I would say in that respect, we would like to keep the word requirement in there since there is a requirement to do one or the other.
Thank you.
Clarification. I also just had a question, and I may have skipped it in reading through it. But as we read through, um, if, if people are testing and then they're out because they're, you know, they've tested positive or they, or they have not yet tested negative in order to come back to work, is that then on their own personal time? That time they're, they're not able to come into the building because they have not yet met the threshold?
Correct. That is unpaid time if they aren't tested. If they are COVID positive due to testing, then they would use their accrued sick or vacation or personally. Correct, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Do you feel like you've had adequate time to ask those questions? And are you ready to make a decision? If so, would somebody like to make a motion?
I, I move that we approve the COVID-19 vaccination testing and face covering policy.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. Eric was a little fast at that time.
Gina was unmuted, so I was waiting.
Thank you both. It's been moved. And second, are there any further discussion or questions? With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Policy approved. Thank you for that really detailed policy and that great walkthrough. Uh, then you've got another policy of clarification for us to hear tonight.
Yeah, so I'm bringing forward an update to our existing face cover policy. Uh, when this policy was originally written in, feels like a billion years ago, but 2020, uh, we, I think, erred on the side of being a little over cautious. State language is that children ages two to five should wear masks. Where are those five and up must? Um, so our policy was written two and up must wear a face cover. And, um, of course, we all know two or three or four-year-olds in our lives. It's not exactly developmentally appropriate to expect them to wear a face cover at all times. Um, and we've, we've just seen, uh, it's caused too much of a gray area for, for both patrons and staff. Uh, so what we're looking for is to just update that one word. Ages five and up must wear a face cover in our buildings.
Thank you. Any questions, further questions for Shannon? Shannon, I do want to say, I mean, I appreciate the clarity in the, in the policies. I know when we were in the buildings in November and December supporting the interviews and the site visits, your staff across the system were very proactive in intercepting people. So I can appreciate that you, that you want clarity in the language. So with that, can I take a motion from a trustee?
I move to approve the draft face cover policy update.
And second?
I'll second that.
Great, that was Gina. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And now we have a resolution for our consideration that would add June 19th to be recognized as a holiday. Would, again, Kristen, it looks like you're going to walk us through that one as well?
Yes, thank you. So in May of 2021, Governor Inslee signed into legislation, House Bill 1016, designated Juneteenth, which is celebrated on June 19th, as a state legal holiday. Um, and that's effective in 2022. So we're asking the board to adopt this resolution to add it to our holiday schedule.
Any questions on behalf of the board? Don't see any. Make a motion on the addition of the holiday to recognize Juneteenth?
I'll make that motion.
Great, thank you, Gina. Any seconds? Second? Is that Sue? There's not a lot of options. I gotta just keep track what's going, what's going on. So we've had a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this resolution?
Oh, but I just think it's, I think it's a wonderful update.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Glad to see this.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. Thank you for those comments. Um, with a motion and a second, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Great. And with that, we have a lot, a lot of items of new business to get here tonight. Okay, Dan, you're up with, with a, I suspect we won't get through this discussion quite as quickly perhaps. So could you walk the board through the request for the capital expenditure budget, please?
Yeah, thanks, Stephanie. So in last month, in December, I presented to you the 2022 operating budget. And in that budget, it reflected matching ongoing revenue sources with ongoing expenditures. There was nothing in that budget that I presented in December for capital. That's on purpose. It's by design. We don't have enough money from our property tax revenue to support any kind of real capital projects. That being said, for moving forward to this month, what we do is we wait to close the books for the prior year. We determined what our surplus was that was available from the prior year. Once that surplus becomes available for us for expenditure, that moves into the category of a non-reoccurring revenue source. It's a one-time revenue source that we have available for us that matches up to capital projects, which are generally one-time expenditures for projects that we do, they're one and done, and then we move on. It's been the practice of the library board to take money, take surplus left over from the prior year and use that to fund future capital projects. So the list of projects that you have here are for projects that are being funded from the surplus out of last year. Uh, there's a big ticket item on there. And that is something that for the newer board members, I haven't been able, I haven't been talking about this too much around the newer board members, but for board members that have been here a little bit longer, this is the McKinney Street project for Sylvan Way and Paulsboro. This is a project that has not been able to be funded for over 13 years. We have a roof that leaks, we have skylights that leak, we have leaks that have caused incursion into our building near our electrical panel and switchgear, which the switchgear needs to be replaced. We have HVAC controls that are of, out of step with reality. They don't really work anymore. And so in the winter time, when our HVAC controls kick in for heat, all of the heating units on the top of Sylvan Way come on out at once, which is actually overtaxing our transformer outside. Um, so we have this kind of intertwined puzzle of things that are affecting each other, and we need to take care of all of these things at once. Um, because Sylvan Way is the hub for our entire library system. It is the hub for internet, it is the hub for our library catalog. If those systems fail, it fails everywhere else in the library system. So it is an ambitious project. Sorry, Gina, do you have a question for anyone?
I do, thank you. Um, and this is still showing how new I am as a board member. I'm learning. If, you said this hasn't been able to be accomplished in 13 years and you have a budget, um, how do you get your estimates for the repairs, especially considering, um, like if, you know, if it's been an ongoing desire for 13 years, but today the expenses are increased, there's chain supply issues. So how does your budget reconcile with what you estimate for expenses for these?
Thanks for asking, Gina. We started this, we started working on this project last, I believe, February. And we worked, so this project is actually a joint venture between us and the state of Washington Department of Enterprise Services. This is a somewhat of a turnkey project where DES oversees this project with their vendor that they have pre-selected that meets all of the state requirements um, for the bidding process, and they're already vetted. And so by working with the state, we're able to work with McKinney Street via the state along the whole pathway to make sure that we're following state guidelines, that we're getting the best deal that we can, that we're, there's an energy, there's an energy-saving component to this. That's what the state was looking for in this. And so we've been working on this with, since March, to develop the scope, to develop the timeframe, to develop, to get things going in the supply chain. And that, you know, we're still working on that because of COVID. Um, but we're hoping to start up this in the spring. Um, and I'm not sure how much of the project will get started on in the spring, but we're certainly hoping to get as much as we can started before the rains come again in the fall. But there are unknowns still that we can't mitigate with supply chain issues with that, with this project. But we are still hoping to get this all completed before the end of the year. We'll certainly get the lighting portion of it done. That's a small portion of this project. The majority of this project is the roof and the skylight repair. Um, and that, as I said, may be delayed. I'm not sure yet. We're still, we're meeting with them on a monthly basis with McKinney Street to get updates on this project and supply chain issues.
Thank you.
So, you're welcome. Um, so we also have, you know, that's a, that's a big bulk of the project is the, of the ask this year for 2022. We also have the new Silverdale FFNE project that's carried forward from last year. So that's a huge amount there that's being carried forward. The Manchester refresh, that's a new project that wasn't here last year. Um, several of the other, this other projects, many of the other projects on this list are carryforwards from last year that we weren't able to finish or accomplish or even get started. But a few things I wanted to point out on, on here is we've also, um, added $150,000 to the materials budget. The reason for that is that we've, we've added an inflation factor in the, in the operating budget that you approved last month. We were still not at 10%. Our materials budget ideally should be at 10% of our operating budget. That's kind of the goal that we've been trying to achieve. And so this year, we are earmarking $150,000 out of the capital fund to, to bring our book budget up to a 10% expenditure level. I don't know that we'll be able to maintain that, but we're doing what we can this year, and we'll see what we can do next year to keep. And we're going to keep whittling away at that goal. We're going to try to keep slowly bringing this up so that, so that our materials budget is 10% of our operating budget. That's a, that's a standard in libraries that we're trying to achieve. We have an ILS replacement on that. I don't know that that'll happen this year, but we're hoping we might be able to make a movement forward on this. All of these capital projects that we have on here, we try to get as much done as we can during the year, but we invariably don't get everything done that's on here. We're probably overzealous in what we try to get accomplished. Um, but we're going to do our best to get as much of this done as we possibly can before the end of the year. So that's kind of a breakdown. I mean, does anybody have any questions on any specific projects or anything else related to that? Be glad to answer that.
Hey, Dan, um, thank you so much for the, for the, for the breakdown. Appreciate it. And kind of going off of, I think, what Gina's comment, um, it might be nice to get an understanding of, of when you're hoping to start the projects and kind of understand where the money is, is going in and out. Because I don't imagine that, you know, at the end of the year, you're going to write a check for $2.4 million and say you're done, right?
So no, we, we do have an estimated cash flow based on some plans from last year. We're, um, trying to, we are working with McKinney Street to update that and be glad to give you, you know, at next month's board meeting, if we've got more information. you, you know, at next month's board meeting, if we've got more information on it, be glad to update the board on the cash flow plan for paying for this project as it goes out. So yeah, we'll get that to you. But yeah, we have to have something to work with, and I need something to work with to basically figure out what our cash flow would be. Right now, it works. Uh, I think it'll still continue to work, but as you, I think I told you during your board orientation, we get most of our property taxes in two large sums in the year, and it's, it's very difficult sometimes to manage that cash flow to make sure we have enough between each of those distributions. But at this point, I'm confident with what we know that we can make it, that we'll keep adjusting as we go along.
Great, yeah, just a suggestion, and this being January, New Year, we redid our own cash flow in our house.
Yep, oh yeah. I re, just, I redo my cash flow every month for KRL. So we're, I'm revising it every single month as we go along. There's not much data in January, but you know, we take a look at it every month.
Thanks.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, are there questions on the part of the board? So I think, you know, just a couple things to note, because it, it can be confusing. Our normal operations budget on any given year is really restricted in growth by, by state law that really allows us to only um, expand that by one percent. That's also why when we have these accrued savings from, that accrue out of an operations budget, they can't just be forwarded and added into a new operations budget, if you will. This is the only way outside of the work spend, um, both through public and private fundraising. Eric, I'm, too, as a leader of the foundation board, um, this is the only other way we garner any funds to make these critical investments in the infrastructure and this responsibility of stewardship we have uh, to the community around our collections and our buildings. I know it's a big number. Um, I want to point particularly to the project that's been deferred for thirteen years. These are not the kind of projects that you can go out and fundraise for, um, because they're just not sexy and exciting. So we do have to uh, work two ways when we can and where we can to make these investments. So um, with that, if there's no further questions on the part of the board for Dan or for Jill, um, I will hear a motion to approve this capital budget.
I, I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-two slash oh-two to amend the uh, twenty twenty-two expenditure budget with the twenty twenty-two proposed capital projects.
It was a mouthful. Any second?
Second.
Further comment or discussion? Very none? Um, ready to uh, take a vote? All in favor? Please, Stephanie. Thank you. Thank you. With that, we still have a, a couple, another significant item to go, but because we are going to hear uh, an offer, a specific offer on one of our Silverdale properties, we're going to go into executive session, um, let's say fifteen minutes, um, and then we will repeat, we will, we will return to regularly programmed scheduling.
Okay, so I'm just uh, double checking, how we doing? If you need longer?
Yeah, I made it. Tammy? It's always a magical thing. One virtual space to another. So um, so just for those who are following along on the agenda, we are not acting on um, new business item eleven point six. We are moving to new business item eleven point seven um, regarding the sale of a piece of property. Can I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we accept Resolution twenty twenty-two slash oh-four approving the sale of the Silverdale property to Sound West Group, um, that resolution.
Looks like we also have to authorize the signatories there, Sue.
Oh, and authorizing signatories, Dan Baer, Chief Financial and Operations Officer. Thanks.
Thank you, thanks for the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll make the second.
Gina, thank you. Um, any more discussion? Oh, we've already discussed. All in favor? Say aye. Great, thank you. With that, we managed to get through a whole bundle of uh, really important, big agenda items, and we are now down to the last item of housekeeping. Um, not seeing any detail here. Um, I think we are ready to close this meeting. Okay. We'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, Eric. Uh, great job on your first meeting. Gina's the experienced one, having attended a couple. And Jill, we're really going to miss your face here.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you.
Okay. Good night, everybody.
Take care.
Good night, take care.